Lisa, if you could give Mr. Valtteren Stefanian.
I've got him here.
Just saw him this morning.
Can I get that on record?
Why don't you start talking to the boss?
I'm gonna get my foot.
Yeah, they're gonna come to us as a prompt. Yeah, and then. So I'm gonna call to order, we're getting started a little bit late, it's 6:15 now, but I'm gonna call to order this special joint budget session, study session of the Capitola City Council and the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency. And we'll start off with a roll call, Sue.
Councilor in Germany?
Here.
Councilor Norton?
Here.
Mayor Story?
Here. We have a quorum. And next we'll move to public comment, are there any members of the public that would like to address the council on items not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I'll close the public comments section and bring it back for council and treasurer, staff comments, council comments tonight. Madam Treasurer, any comments?
No comments.
And staff. Which brings us to our general government section and item 4A, which is to receive the mid-year 2013-14 fiscal year budget financial report. And the recommended action is to receive the report. So we'll start with staff.
Good evening, Mayor Story Council, I'm here to provide an update on the city's fiscal year status. The goal of this presentation is to provide an opportunity to review the city's fiscal activities and review and address any potential changes. As we move through the presentation, we'll look over the budget timelines, we'll provide an overview of where we're at and where we're projected to be. We'll look at some of the year-to-date information and then drill down to some of the changes that we're projecting for year-end. The recommended action tonight will be to receive the report, approve a budget amendment, and authorize a personnel change within the police department. The police department is proposing eliminating a 900-hour part-time parking enforcement officer and replacing it with one full-time parking enforcement officer position. They're also requesting the ability to fill the full-time position. It's anticipated that the revenues projected from this position will help offset the cost or completely offset the cost. And it is also identified as a needed position to help assist with the new Pacific Cove parking lot. At the conclusion of this presentation, the city manager will review and go over the budget principles. The budget timelines are presented with May 9th as the proposed distribution of the budget document. May 20th, the Finance Advisory Committee will prepare recommendations. The council will meet on May 21st, 29th, June 14th, and June 19th at special meetings to receive information on the budget and also to deliberate on it. June 26th would be the final adoption date. Just to recap, when we adopted the fiscal year 13-14 budget, we had a full year of measure-o revenues, whereas last year we only had a quarter of a year in measure-o revenues. We have the complete administrative allowance from the successor agency budgeted, and as you may recall in the last successor agency meeting, the administrative allowance was reduced to $75,000 or $150,000 a year. That does not take place in the fiscal year 13-14 budget, that will occur in next year's budget. There's also a significant number of transfers for CIPs and reserves. The budget includes over $900,000 in measure-o transfers. And then some key adjustments that took place, one, the December fund balance allocation, which was $516,000. And over 300, and close to 300,000 of that also went to CIP and reserves. What you'll be seeing is some core revenue increases in sales tax and TOT, and you'll see a $53,000 clawback from the RDA. Another adjustment, the funds for the recommended personnel change have been incorporated to the budget as well as some of the increases that were to take place in regards to seasonal employees. Just in a broad category, just looking back a couple of years, when I first started, we were having fiscal year challenges, the flood recovery, we were issuing debt, and the RDA was dissolving, and it looked like we were really trying to make ends meet. Now, looking at the budget, we're coming in with what could be, what looks to be like a surplus. We're looking at a $690,000 year-end surplus, and our operating revenues are projected to increase by 506,000. Our net operating expenditures are projected to remain relatively constant. However, what you're going to see is a decrease in personnel services and an increase in contract costs. And we'll go into the smaller pieces and portions of that in a little bit later. Measure-o funds are anticipated to generate $1 million. Just looking at the fiscal year end estimate, we had a beginning fund balance of $746,000. On December 12th, $516,000 of that was allocated. $200,000 was retained in general fund balance to assist with fluctuations in revenues and expenditures. And looking at the projected revenues, what you'll see is we're going up close to $500,000 is what we're projecting. And that's largely because of sales tax and TOT taxes. And you'll see the expenditures have remained relatively constant. Overall, revenues are estimated to be 14.3 million with 76.6 coming from property taxes. 7.2 million of that is sales tax, while 1.8 is property tax and 1.2 is TOT tax. Looking at how we are year-to-date compared to prior years, sales taxes is currently $600,000 greater than prior year. That includes the first quarter receipts plus any other receipts that we've received to date. We do not have the second quarter in at this time, so we're still waiting for that key figure. From measure-o, we've received $326,000, and we have a non-typical triple flip, which is $164,000. When reviewing this last year, it was because of the recovery of sales tax increase was so great that the triple flip is increased at this point. Also, you know, improved economic development. As you can see, the first quarter of sales taxes is 27,000 or 1.8% over budget. While this graph doesn't necessarily show it clearly, we'll switch to the second graph, which talks a little bit more about the TOT tax. And this is where we're seeing some very significant increases. If you look at the red line for fiscal year 13-14, you'll see that it's surprisingly high as compared to the other year, to the years prior. And this annual seven-month increase is $117,000 or 19% over the budget. We can attribute this to some of the seasonal changes, the increased warm weather season, as well as general economic improvement. And other cities are also seeing high increases in their TOT. Right now, we had budgeted for 984,000 and we're more than 74%, and we've already achieved more than 74% of that. And looking forward, we're estimating just a 2.5% increase, just to be conservative, for the next few months. And in doing that, we're looking at close to $200,000 more than the budgeted figure as we go into the year-end amounts. Other three-year revenue trends is just looking at some of the charts, charges for services is higher to date. We had an increase in recreation fees, we're seeing increased parking meter revenues, and we're seeing some increased planning fees. If you look at the other category, you'll see a decrease, that's largely just due to timing of grant revenues. It just would be dependent on when departments are applying for reimbursements or when activities have been made to require reimbursement. Revenues by category, these are in the thousands, property tax is going up at 68,000. That's based on actual estimates from our county auditor controller, and it also includes some increases in unsecured property tax. Sales tax, we're estimating to go up $125,000 just based on performance. We've seen an increase in just the first quarter of around $27,000. At looking at alternate methods of projections, we believe that 125,000 may be a reasonable number. The other large increase is the TOT tax, which we discussed earlier, and we're estimating about $245,000 greater. So the total difference in revenues that we'll be receiving is estimated to be $506,000. In general, just looking at expenditures, the city's total expenditures without the 516,000 allocation of December fund balance, you can see this 13.8 million with the largest share going to personnel. I've also included the section for other financing uses because such a significant amount of the revenues are being allocated in a one-to-one relationship with the measure-o expenditures. Looking at three-year expenditure trends, you'll see personnel services appear to be up, and that's primarily due to a large number of vacancies that occurred in fiscal year 12-13, and also overtime savings within the police department. Contract services relatively constant, and other financing uses up primarily due to the large number of transfers to CIP and reserves. If we look at expenditures by category, you'll see personnel services are $118,000 less than projected. A significant portion of this is that when we prepared the mid-year, when we prepared the fiscal year 13-14 budget, we had several vacancies. And as these vacancies are being filled, they're being filled at steps that are lower than the original budget. And also, we have a few pepper employees which are saving us the difference in retirement cost. And if you're looking at a regular employee, the city is paying 16.488 for a miscellaneous employee, whereas a pepper employee, it's close to 6.25%. So you're seeing that reflected in the salary changes. In contract cost, it's estimated we'll be going up about $112,000. Close to $30,000 of that is estimated increase for water supply costs. There are also some increased expenditures associated with compliance for stormwater and the creeks. And then we also have a $46,000 grant expenditure that wasn't budgeted but has a corresponding revenue. And you'll see the RDA clawback also for 52,000. The total expenditures have changed by $41,000, so relatively very little amount. If we look at expenditures by department, law enforcement, typically the highest department is close to 48%, and public works follows with 18.7%. And if we were to drill down to see how the departments are varying in their budgets, one thing you'll notice in a law enforcement and the parking budget, towards the end of last year, we had changed a parking enforcement officer to a CSO. So that net difference didn't get changed in time for the budget. So what you're seeing with the 56 and the 39 is just a change between that position where it's being charged to. You'll see some reductions in community development, that's primarily related to some of the new position changes and some vacancies within the department. You'll see recreation expenses increase, however, earlier you've seen that the recreation revenues have increased. So actually, the recreational expenses have increased at a lesser amount than the revenues coming in. Just to give you an update on the measure-o funding plan, and just reviewing the numbers, we're going to be funding at least one year, close to one year earlier than originally anticipated. The $300,000 is circled just because sometimes when you're looking at potential allocation of the pie, someone may ask, how much would we need to cut it short to fund one year earlier? So the $300,000 would be the amount that you'd need if you wanted to try to fund the reserves one year earlier. Also, sticking, staying true to the measure-o priorities, the CIP and street maintenance amounts, you'll see increasing. The measure-o funds are set aside for those specific priorities, so when you're seeing a reduction in the reserves, those funds are being set aside for CIP right now, so you'll see an increased CIP in 15-16, and you'll see another increase in 16-17. To provide an update on the emergency and contingency reserve balances, we're estimating to be at 2.2 million at the end of this fiscal year, and we're anticipated to reach our $3 million target in fiscal year 15-16. And as you may recall, at one point, we were trying to replenish the reserves, $400,000 was taken from the Equipment and Information Technology Funds. So you'll see in fiscal year 12-13, the decline in the funds. However, as we move into the fiscal year 13-14 year-end projections, as well as the fiscal year 14-15 planned budgets, you'll see that those funds, which are in the lower blue shade and purple, are actually starting to build themselves up again. Within this document, you'll also have a budget adjustment for other funds. Most of them are net to a zero amount, for instance, Pacific Cove and the Capital Improvement Fund, they're projects that are carried forward, the related revenues and the expenditures are anticipated to be brought forward into the next year. The Capitola Housing Successor, we've received updated revenues from the auditor. we've received updated revenues from the Auditor Controller, and the expenses that are changing are relational to that. The Supplemental Law Enforcement Services Fund, there is a grant that's expiring, and the funds weren't appropriated for expenditures. So the Police Department has identified some grant expenditures, and the money from this grant will be appropriated to purchase them. The Public Art Fund, this is primarily administrative in nature. Due to the way our budget adjustment policy is crafted, this is one item that didn't get carried forward at the year-end. So it's just to carry over the related project expenditures. It represents no increase in the project cost. We also received updated numbers in relation to our gas tax revenues, and the related expenditures have been adjusted proportionally. Just some considerations. Fiscal uncertainties, of course, could change the estimate for year-end. And if things, if the numbers hold true, the allocation of the residual fund balance will be something to come up at a future budget study session. We're going to be looking at monitoring the performance of the core revenues. We should be receiving a second, a sales tax number coming up within the next month. We'll be looking at alternate strategies, which include allocation to CIP projects, reserves, other post-employment benefits, and potentially a facility maintenance reserve fund. These items will be reviewed with the Finance Advisory Committee and later presented at a budget study session. Any questions?
I've got some questions, Tori. So just real quick, it was kind of fast at the very beginning, and I wasn't on track yet. But you said the adding one full-time parking enforcement officer will offset the cost? What do you mean by that exactly?
Actually, some of the revenues produced from the parking lot, it could be either citations, or it could be increased parking meter transactions that occur, because that parking enforcement officer would be assigned, I'd look to the chief, either part-time or full-time to the new Pacific Cove parking lot. And it would be, the position would be beginning at the same time the parking lot was opened, anticipated to be in April.
So the fact that they're going to be full-time will even be offset by a part-time, because they're generating more revenue?
Yeah, you'll have a full-time position, and you'll be deleting 900 hours associated with a temporary position, which is just less than half-time. And just based on projections, you know, we're anticipating increased revenue. And looking at trends in citations, the chief has estimated that just based on what he's seen, that they should be able to recover some of the funds for that through the citations, as well as the parking meters.
Great. Can I keep asking questions?
You're the treasurer.
Okay. So, the clawback, when is that going to happen?
It's actually already happened. We've been ordered by the Department of Finance to submit it. So we've actually had to transfer it to the successor agency. We haven't actually given any of the funds back at this point. But it's been pretty much, you know, to maintain compliance, you have to give it to the successor agency.
Okay. The decrease in Personnel Service at 118, what's causing that?
We have positions that were hired at a lower rate. So typically, we budget for a mid-to-high step, depending on the position that's coming in. Like, for instance, a senior planner position, we may anticipate, because it is a senior planner position, we're getting a person who's been in practice for a significant amount of time. So they might be coming in at top step. Or in relation, that person might be hired at step A or B. So you're going to see a lower salary there, as well as if we assumed a person with either a Peppera or a mid-grade retirement cost, and this person comes in at that lower rate, then you're going to see savings associated with that also.
Can you elaborate on the, I'm probably not pronouncing it right, Peckra or Petra?
The Peppera is the new third-tier retirement plan. For instance, we have the basic cap, which is 16.488 for miscellaneous employees. And then we have a classic tier-two plan, which means that the city will pay 11.488% for the first five years of that person's employment. And then with the new legislation regarding state retirements, all new employees who haven't been enrolled in PERS or have been in a reciprocal organization are being enrolled now in this new plan. And this new plan is only 6.25%. So if you look at the spread between the 16.488% of a base salary to 6.25, you're seeing, you know, a 10% difference.
So any new employees being hired are in this program, if they're not already in a CalPERS program?
If they're not already in CalPERS or a reciprocal program.
Okay. Let someone else go for a while. Sorry.
Tori, the 56.2% for Personnel, that's citywide. That includes safety, non-safety, all the personnel costs.
Yes.
Remarkable. Thank you.
Tori, thank you for the excellent report. Where in the revenues by category is the parking revenue?
It is, it is in the Charges for Service category.
Okay. At one time, we were talking about actually doing some accountability on the changeover from the parking systems we have now to, from what we had before. Is this showing right now that we have increased revenue right now with existing programs than we had last year?
If we look from last year, I believe we do have some increased revenues. I would probably have to go back and look at that number. But when the new meters were installed, you are seeing increases in revenues. I don't believe it was as high as initially projected when they were, when the pay stations were installed.
Can we get some kind of figures on the cost of what we're up against, including the cost of installing the meters in the program? Some kind of accountability of whether the new programs are working for us as compared to what we were doing before?
Certainly.
Is that highlighted on the fines and, on the three-year other revenue trends?
Okay.
Is that where the parking stuff is highlighted? Because it looks like there's a decrease. I don't know if the decrease was because of the parking meters or anything like that.
The three-year charges for services, primarily the increases you're seeing, you are seeing $29,000 increase in parking meter revenues, if you're looking on the three-year other trends.
But where is that located? Is it in the fines and?
It's in the charges for services.
Oh, got it.
Yes. Fines and forfeitures could relate to parking, parking tickets, if the timing expires on the meter or the pay station. However, the parking meters themselves are contained in the charges for services amount.
The Pacific Cove Parking Capital Improvement Fund, is that a separate category as far as accounting? Or is that, do we have an ongoing cost to it? And is it separated from the cost of removal of the tenants from that? Is there a separate, is that a separate category or is that altogether?
We maintain a separate category specifically for the I-Bank funding. So if you're looking at the Pacific Cove Park Fund, it would include all the monies that we're getting, the proceeds from the I-Bank loan, as well as the related expenditures for that piece of the project. I believe, and I'll check with our Public Works Director, but the cost of the retaining wall is coming out of the, is coming out of the regular CIP account. There is also a third account, which is called the Pacific Cove Relocation Fund. And within that fund is all the relocation expenses, as well as any related fees with concessions made to the homeowners, or.
Yeah, there's two funds. There was a fund for closure of the park and removal of all the coaches. There's a separate fund for.
And we have those accountability, the accountability separate on those?
Yes.
So we have like a running total on?
Yes, we can produce reports for revenue and expenditures of both of them.
Okay. I'm having a little problem with the correlation of increasing staff related to opening a Pacific Cove, because Pacific Cove is only related to more people coming to Capitola and using it, not the number of parking spaces. Because 70% of the time, we don't even need that parking lot. My point is, is that we only see increased revenues in parking lots if more people come to town. So if you want to say that availability of parking makes it more indigenous to come to Capitola, you could make the argument that we would see more revenue from that. And so hiring a person specifically to take care of that may not be a necessary position under those pretenses. If they were saying that they were going to see more people coming to town, which is a possibility, then you have more need for employees to take care of that.
I take a stab at this one. Historically, the Parking Enforcement Division has had three full-time parking enforcement officers, plus a part-time parking enforcement officer, and a contract employee who would help with meter repair. At this point, we're down to two full-time and one part-time employee. And we don't have the contract for meter repair, given that we don't have the hundreds of individual meters anymore. So what we're recommending is taking that hourly employee and making them a full-time employee, or making that position a full-time position. That would bring us to the same level we've been historically, of three full-time employees within the Parking Division. And we're not proposing at this time to add the hourly position back in. We are doing the maintenance of these new meters in-house, and right now, it's been the hourly employee that's been doing that. And we found that these meters are unfortunately more finicky than we would like, A. And B, the importance of keeping them up and operational is higher than the individual meters were before. I think it's pretty intuitive, but you can imagine that having an individual meter that didn't work wasn't such a big deal. Having one of these pay stations not work is. And by bringing this person on full-time, we're getting back to the historic staff level, and then I think we'd have more frequent opportunities to service and maintain these things.
And I have no problem with that. I think that's fine. My only point is, is that increased parking revenue is only based on, not employees, it's based on availability, maybe availability of parking, or the fact that we suspect that more people are going to park in our parking lot.
Yeah, I mean.
We don't know that.
Right. I think, you know, in general, the Parking Enforcement Division does self-fund, you know, primarily through signs and fines and forfeitures. So in general, that position has, those positions do end up self-funding. And I think the other thing to keep in mind is that we're going to be increasing our inventory of spaces to patrol, maybe not all year-long, but during certainly times of the year, by 222 spaces. So we have a sort of bigger patrol area, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
When you give us the report on the balance between the parking pay stations and the parking meters, I'm sure you're going to include the savings on not having someone running around collecting quarters, the armored car service, and the meter repair. You should factor that in, too.
Yes, and we'll look at the credit card fees, which we should actually see going down.
Ed?
I'm good, Tim.
Okay.
I have more questions.
Go ahead.
The Mezuro, kind of hypothetical, or what we expect it to be at, what's the date? By when should we expect to have a million dollars from the Mezuro?
We won't actually receive all of the Mezuro funds until close to, I believe it's September of next year, because the last quarter, we have to accrue it back.
So that's when we expect the Mezuro to generate a million-ish dollars?
That's when we should actually receive the cash for it.
Okay.
But as you're aware, you know, with the way the city operates under fund accounting, essentially, we identify a million dollars of revenue this year. Physically, we don't get all the money for this calendar fiscal year until, what is it, September of 2015. But from a fund accounting standpoint, we have the million dollars today.
Is that it?
That's it. Thank you.
Tori, I had a couple of questions. And one, going back to the TOT trends and projections, and this is, you know, quite a significant increase over what we had budgeted. And I was wondering, my question is, how does this compare to the rest of the county? Is the rest of the county seeing these kinds of increases as well? Or are we doing something better here?
What I've actually seen is City of Santa Cruz's numbers have came in relatively similar when they take out the additional percentage for their increased TOT. When they did their year-over-year comparison, they came out with a similar number.
They did. Okay. And my other question is on contract services. That, you know, are projected to be 112,000 over budget. And I was just wondering if you could elaborate more on why that's the case. I know you mentioned that 30% is due to water supply cost. I wasn't quite sure what.
Just increased water utility cost. Just, I believe, and I looked to the Public Works Director a little bit on that one, but I believe it's due to, it was actually 30,000, close to 30,000 is due just because rate increases, due to the drought, I believe. They're anticipating that the rates may jump. So there's $30,000 there.
But just to follow up on that, we categorize water utilities as contract services?
Yes.
Yes, it's budgeted as a contract service.
Okay, okay. Because usually, I think of independent contractors when, under contract services, and so.
All our utilities are in contract services. So water, sewer, and PG&E bills all fall under the contract services in our budget.
Is there separate meters, Steve, on all our facilities where we're billed by meter? Or are we billed as one group rate?
No, we are, all our facilities have a separate meter. So all our parks and the buildings.
So we're billed separately for each one of those?
Yes, we are.
Okay. That keeps us in a smaller user group, or is there a benefit to that?
No, it's a requirement. You can't have a service without a meter these days, so.
Well, I was just thinking that, you know, there's, in the water rates, it goes by, the bigger user you are, the bigger percentage, I think you're paying on the thing. Is that?
Well, you pay more for your meter. If you have a 3/4-inch meter or a 1-inch meter, you pay a lot more for the meter and standby cost and flat rate. But the actual water that you're using, I think, I believe is all at the same rate, no matter what size meter you have.
It's the size of the meter.
And so, and so, does the water just give us any benefit as being a city, or is there any benefit?
No, no. Per state law, we all have to pay the, all users have to pay the same rate for their water, whether we're an industry or a governmental agency. So there's no breaks. It's required that everybody pays a fair share.
Are we going to have a problem if they change rates for overuse each?
Well, we're taking steps to drastically reduce our water use wherever we can. We're out here removing sod material where we can. I'm having Eddie Ray Garcia, our Public Maintenance Supervisor, put together a list of non-essential turf areas. We plan on eliminating all of, not most of those. And we're going to try and focus what water use, high water use we have on our two sports fields at Monterey Park and Jade Street Park.
Okay, thank you.
Are we subject to tier grades?
Yes, we are. Yeah.
So how do we get a tier grade? There's nothing to compare us to. You know, is there anybody else that provides?
I'd have to get that information and get that back to you. I haven't looked at the water bill and exactly where the tiers fall. But I think we are a commercial user as a general category. But I'd be happy to look at that and report.
Is that worth looking at, Steve?
Okay. Well, I think it's worth looking at, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, I would be interested in maybe, in the development of next year's budget, kind of maybe flagging that item. We may have to set aside more money.
Right. It seems every year, we've budgeted more for water use, and we're continually under-budgeting for it, so.
Yeah, and maybe we're coming even to a greater crunch time, and that increased rates may be happening sooner than we truly expect. And maybe there's more things that we need to do in order to reduce our water usage. And so, maybe at some point, maybe a separate, you know, council session on just our overall water usage and how we're doing. But going back to the contract services, I mean, that water's 30% of it. Are there other independent contracts or other, what's the other 70% of it?
$46,000 of that is related to a Safe Routes to School grant. It's grant expenditures. That, I believe they weren't certain if they were going to be expending this year, but it looks like they are. So we've added the $46,000 into the budget.
And that was a budgeting error on Public Works' part. We budgeted the revenue, but we didn't budget the expenditure. So you're seeing the expenditure now added into that.
Does the school district administer that, Steve?
It's a joint project between the two of us. They are, they applied for the grant, but we had to co-sign on it, because we're the local agency that works with Caltrans. So we are actually, we are in the process of selecting a consultant with them. They need to approve it. The scope of work is written into the grant, so.
What are you looking at?
It's a grant that studies barriers to walking. It's a grant that studies barriers to walking and riding to all of the schools in the district. And so we have...
All the schools, right. So it's not just Capitola?
Not just Capitola. It's all the district schools. So right now, actually, the consultant has been selected, but we're waiting for Caltrans to get the final go-ahead, and we expect that probably toward the end of March before they can go forward with that.
Maybe we can tie that together a little bit with our roundabout money, as far as looking at that area. That's a Safe Routes problem right there.
Yeah. Well, this grant, you know, was written in 2009, I believe, and very specific to what it was.
Is it a one-year thing, or is it ongoing?
The grant? The grant's a one, it's $46,000 expenditure, and that's all it is.
Can we apply again, or is this just a one?
Yes, we can. Well, the Safe Routes to School program's actually going away, and the federal government's reclassifying it as a Transportation Act grant. And it's going to include Safe Routes to School and highway safety projects. You're going to now be competing for one pot. They're just coming out with those guidelines now, so we'll let you know.
Thank you.
Are there other questions?
I have one more.
Say it, then.
Tori, what's the other financing uses and transfers? And what's the reason or an idea of why you think it might have increased significantly?
Part of it is the Measure O transfers. $954,000 of it is related to Measure O monies. And when you're looking at the overall transfers, then you'll also have in there close to $300,000, which includes the additional fund balance transfers from reserves and to CIP, as well as a transfer to the Equipment Fund for $140,000 for the purchase of the new street sweeper.
Thank you. Great presentation.
So I'll bring it back. I mean, I noticed that there's no members of the public in the audience, so I'm going to close the microphone unless...
Charlie Chaplin.
Yeah. Is there any member of the public that would like to address us on this item? She's not taking it. So I'll bring that, this back for, you know, council discussion and possible action. It says to receive a report, but I assume that we need to authorize the personnel changes?
Authorize the personnel changes as well as the budget adjustments.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, I'll defer to the council on further discussions and action. Anybody want to make a motion?
Are we looking at the $690,000 right now?
Steph's recommendation on that is that we, in the past, when we've looked at the fund balance allocation, we've run through the Finance Advisory Committee. And since the mid-year report was just recently generated, we're suggesting running through the Finance Advisory Committee to get some recommendations out of that group. And then probably during the budget process, bring back a recommendation about how to look at the fund balance later this spring.
Okay. So right now, we're looking for a motion for the full-time parking attendant, parking enforcement, and also the mid-year report.
And the budget amendment associated with the mid-year report, which is just adjusting all the revenues consistent with the report you received.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Which will bring us to Item 4B, which is the review of prior year's budget principles and determination of budget principles for the 2014-15 fiscal year. The recommended action is to discuss and adopt budget principles that will guide the staff in preparation of the draft annual budget. Staff report?
Council members. So what we're doing tonight is taking a look at our budget principles. And the budget principles are something we've been doing for several years now, and are really, if you will, a roadmap that staff uses to prepare the draft budget that gets presented to the public and to council in May. That leads then, obviously, to the adopted budget through the budget hearing process, and results in the city's projects and programs that it'll undertake in a given fiscal year. The budget principles grew, I think, a little bit out of a process the city used to engage in, which was an annual year goal-setting session, which was sort of identifying goals for the city to accomplish in any given calendar year. And one of the things we worked on was trying to integrate that goal process with the budgeting process, so that as staff went forward to develop the budget, we were hearing from the council in an early way about what their priorities were, and about how we would be drafting a budget. So you'll recall that our budget principles are divided into three categories. We talk about fiscal policies, public service policies, and public improvements. To some degree, I think that the generation of these categories were guided by our last community survey, which identified each one of these individual items as being of either extreme or very high importance to folks, as well as either really important to quality of life. So what I've done is, is I've gone back through the budget principles that we identified. And if you'd like, we can talk about specific accomplishments under each, but identify whether we, staff's assessment is we've accomplished those specific goals or principles, or whether we are on our way, or whether they haven't yet been accomplished. And then my thinking was, we could take a look, and have a spreadsheet with all of the principles from last year, and take a look at what we would like to carry forward, and if there's changes that the council would like to provide as staff goes forward and develops the draft budget. So again, the fiscal stability and balanced budgets, the sort of overarching principle. And underneath that, we had positive fund balances, reestablishing the city's reserves, reviewing and prioritizing our services, and continuing to examine contract services. And staff's assessment is that during this current fiscal year, we've done those things. Obviously, in some ways, all of these things are ongoing efforts. They're not a one-and-done kind of thing. But we have specific examples of achievements that have been made under each one of these. Supporting economic development was another goal. Specific items underneath it were to facilitate the mall improvements and to establish an in-loop parking fee program. As you recall, the parking fee program was established earlier this year. The mall improvements have proven challenging. We have continued to remain engaged in conversations with the mall and Santa Cruz Metro about the relocation of the Transit Center, which is kind of at the heart of mall redevelopment. So under that, we gave ourselves a partial. There's some progress made, but it certainly isn't complete. And then maintaining responsible levels of fees and reviewing and revising the city's fee schedules. You recall, we did that. We do that on an annual basis. In addition, we made some specific adjustments to our fee schedule at the last meeting, including establishing the green energy incentive program, which basically zeroes out some fees for some projects that we would like folks to do to help do their part to conserve energy in our community. Maintaining a transparent, effective, and accessible government. We talk about the website, our ability to accept credit cards, and producing timely and accurate financial reports. The only one that we identified partial completion was the credit cards. We have made progress on accepting credit cards. In fact, in our new banking contract, we believe that we will be expanding our ability to do that. And we plan to continue to expand the city's ability to give people a variety of wise ways to pay the city. Establishing a social media presence, I think probably our biggest success in that would have to be the police departments. Police department has 924 NICSIL users signed up at this point, which represents nearly 10% of our population. NICSIL, for those of you who aren't aware, is an opportunity to get alerts sent out by our police department or the city when there's a particular issue going on in the city. And in fact, it was used today to let folks know about the traffic light outage at 41st Avenue and Capitola Road. Probably our social media presence in other venues isn't necessarily that high. Nevertheless, I think our new website has provided a real good front face on the internet for the city. Continuing to recognize the community's high priority on public safety, reviewing our funding and funding sources for the CIP and the Community Grant Program, providing high-quality community development services, and evaluating our recreation programs and outreach. And in recreation, we've done a number of things on an internal level, consolidated some of our mailings, gone through and been able to save some on printing. We've seen some real good upticks in recreation enrollment this year, as well as increased revenue. And obviously, community development has gone through some real significant transitions this year. And in my opinion, I think we've come out real well. I think we have a real strong staff and a real strong work program at this point, moving forward in our community development department. And looking at the public improvement goals that we established, we identified infrastructure and pavement management as being a very high priority. And under that, we had completing the Claire's Street Traffic Calming Project, implementing Measure O, CIP Street Funding Plan, and completing our annual Slurry Seal Project. We gave ourselves a partial on the Claire's Project. It's obviously not complete and will not be complete this fiscal year. We've taken some steps. You'll recall, the council approved a design contract to finalize the engineering and the bid package for that project last month. We completed a Slurry Seal Project, as well as allocated several million dollars to our CIP through a variety of sources, both debt funding, as well as Measure O and general fund dollars. Ensure programs are in place for public-private development projects. This is, if you will, was trying to, was a little bit about the McGregor site, so that the McGregor site would be available should a private developer propose a project. And was also to establish a use plan for the McGregor site. We identified maintaining and improving our natural resources and green programs, ensuring maintenance and cleanliness, city facilities, sidewalks, and streets. We gave ourselves checkmarks on all of those. I think on the last two, there's still ongoing work that can be done. I think probably every city in the country would like to be able to have cleaner sidewalks and streets. But at the same time, I think we're doing a pretty good job. Our street sweeping program is exemplary. We purchased a new street sweeper, are purchasing a new street sweeper this year. And we purchased a pressure washer, which is allowing us to do some spot washing in the village. And this is the last one of these tables that I'll be showing you. The end is in sight. Completing the adoption of the city's general plan, we gave ourselves a partial on that. The EIR was released for public comment, as you're well aware. The public comment period closed on Friday. We received relatively few comments. We do plan to be scheduling our planning commission and city council hearings for adoption of the general plan this spring. Supporting the Capitola Library by continuing to maintain the funding from the former redevelopment agency into the library fund, as well as convening the library subcommittee. The first subcommittee meeting is scheduled for next month, as the council formed the committee at the last meeting. Exploring the options to develop a skate park and a dog park, and that's a nice big checkmark in my mind. It's not open yet, but we certainly have explored it. And at this point, we have a plan in place to look at building a park at McGregor. Improving ADA and pedestrian access in the city. We have a number of sidewalk projects that were completed this last year, several high-profile ones in the village, as well as several more that we expect to take place in the next couple of months. And probably the least, to be done, is opening the entire Rispin property to the public, which was, we were identifying was going to be upon state certification that the city owned it and pursuing improvement grants. We've received at this point about as much certification as we're going to get from the state, that it's going to be ours. And we actually have applied for a park grant, which we haven't received word yet, which was, at a high end, would be $300,000 to make some improvements to the Rispin property. So with that, I'm available for any questions if there's any discussion about this. And in addition, I have the goals, and these goals and principles from last year. If the council would like to take a look at them and see which would be appropriate to carry forward next year, and if there's any additions or other modifications the council would like to make.
Yeah, Mike?
Well, even though we have checkmarks on many of them, I think it should be pretty obvious that there are things like maintaining the clean streets, and, you know, improving the streets, and continuing the CIP program, things that are obviously checked and checked off, things like developing a dog and skate park. You know, we don't have a new library yet, so I think we should leave those on there. And we have convened the meeting of the ad hoc committee. We'll be fully funded in our library trust fund three years early by being funded next year. So we're ready to roll. But it seems like, unless you want to go back and tell, have us tell you specifically, I think the checkmarks that stay on there, I mean, the items that stay on there are pretty obvious.
A couple jumped out at me. One was, and we discussed this this year, but we didn't seem to have any reservations, is establish an in-loop parking program. And I think, I think we still have direction from this council to look at doing that.
We did it.
What did we do? There is none.
Yeah, there is. And we specified a large hotel in the village.
We put a lot of conditions on it, so that...
But that's, we didn't do it. You already gave them away. We have no program if we give them all away. The point is, is that establishing a new program may mean more than putting Pacific COVID, may mean that there needs to be a parking assessment district, or there needs to be other means of funding in lieu parking. Right now, we have no in-loop parking program.
We don't have any more parking spaces. I think we have an in-loop parking program set up, so that even though we've kind of earmarked the ones we have that are extra, if we get a parking structure, we can still use the same in-loop fee program. Am I wrong?
The city has established an in-loop fee program, by which we've reserved spaces in the new lot for specific kinds of projects. And the criteria that was put on the program was that they were large hotels that, I believe that we included that they had an in-loop, sorry.
Valet.
Thank you. A valet parking program. And the fee was, in the program, as we established, was set so that it was intended to be set at the time of application for the program. So there's a program in place. The genesis behind this was really to make sure that some of those spaces in the new lot were available for future projects.
That's fine, but we allocate them all to one project is what we did. There's no other project that fits that criteria one. And also, it's not a project that exists. It doesn't exist. So we haven't allocated it to anywhere. It doesn't exist. We have no application. We have no fee. And so basically, we have no in-loop program, because we've allocated them to a project that doesn't exist, and we can't give them to anybody else. So I still think there's a need for an in-loop parking fee, whether, you know, these, whether we use those spaces, or we go find another way to do that. I think the program should move forward. It's a real need in our community, particularly with other businesses that are down there. We have, we have a village that's dead stopped. It cannot expand one square inch without having an in-loop parking fee or some way to resolve the parking issue. And right now, we don't have any means of doing that. So are we waiting for the next 10 years for a hotel to come along? And in the meantime, the hotel, the whole village stays at a standstill because of that? I don't think that's a good idea. I don't think that's, I don't think that supports economic development, nor is it good for the rest of the property owners of the community down there. So I think we should pursue, continue to pursue the economic, the establishment of an in-loop parking program. My second one is the review of the city fees. I know we looked at it last year when we did the budget hearings. We had a review of that. Are we going to do, is that something we're planning on doing again this year?
With the fees, we actually have a very exciting plan for this next year. And I'll let our finance director explain it to you.
What we're looking at is a partnership with the City of Scotts Valley. We were looking at cost sharing for assistance on fee structures, especially in the line of community development fees. And we're looking at a proposal right now where we would be able to achieve this with some cost savings that we've had within the budget. And hopefully, we will be able to start this within the next month or two.
So what we're looking at is a little bit more of a comprehensive review of our fees, looking at some outside help. Tori was able to achieve some salary savings, as you'll recall, with some vacancies we've had in the finance department. And this has been on the to-do list for a while. And looking like we can lower the costs a little bit by partnering with Scotts Valley to sort of share a consultant to help us out with this process a little bit. So we will be taking a more comprehensive look at the fees this next year.
One of the items that will come out of that study is, will show the full cost of a particular fee, so that as a council, you'll be able to see 100% of the cost. But you may say you want to choose to only set a policy where you recover 60% of the fees, 30% of the fees, and then you would be able to see the piece that was being subsidized by the general fund.
Okay. My only other comment is that we don't, in this whole program, we don't address reserves beyond the first, I think there's the first item up here. And one of them that's suggested is the possibility, and Jamie, you brought up, about a facilities reserve, the ability to actually start saving money, or banking money on future needs and keeping up our facilities, which we don't have at this point. You want to expand on that a little bit, Jamie?
Yeah, that is something that we've identified at a staff level as being a potential real need in the city. You know, the city has multiple facilities that it owns, the Wharf, City Hall, Corp Yard, Community Center, gym, all kinds of facilities, bathrooms. You know, I don't know off the top of my head the total value of all of those, but let's just say for discussion purposes, it's $20 million worth of buildings that the city owns would cost to replace it. And realistically, when you have this many public facilities, there's a cost each and every year to keeping them operational, and that will come up over time, whether you save the money or not. you save the money or not. You're going to need new roofs, you're going to need new HVACs. So we've been looking at maybe trying to identify some mechanism by which we could kind of cordon off money to take care of our facilities rather than doing it on an annual basis, and establishing basically a facilities reserve that's based in some way on looking at them, what our total need is, what our 20-year average is going to be, so we don't have these spikes and valleys, peaks and valleys, and it doesn't become sort of crisis mode that, you know, a building is leaking and how are we going to deal with it. So that is something that we are, staff is looking at, and we do expect to propose something like that in next year's budget.
Okay. Don't we have an equipment reserve?
We do. And the equipment reserve primarily doesn't, isn't used for the facilities. It's used for stuff that moves around, and I could, the Public Works Director, if you'd like more details on that.
No, no, I mean, but it seems like we could just expand the definition. I mean, it doesn't have to be moving equipment. It could be stationary equipment, and, and maybe it just needs to be worked on, funded at a higher level, too.
Yeah, whether it was a separate reserve or whether it was incorporated into one of the others is certainly an open item for discussion. I think the notion behind trying to identify, you know, if the city were to gain or lose facilities, then, you know, there'd be, to some degree, different needs over time. And so at least having something that's based on that concept, I think, is a solid one and probably would got, would serve the city well in the long term. One more item, Sam? Sorry.
Sure, go ahead, Dennis.
One thing we, we overlook, and maybe just because we expect it to always be there, is our wharf. It's time we start looking at a long-term solution to its maintenance and building, maybe, maybe finding an outside source or partner that would want to partner with us as, as far as having a need to maintain along with, with our own recreation and, and user as a city. So this would be a good year to start doing that. It's been 30, it's 30 years ago this year that we lost the wharf, the end of the wharf, so our time may be coming.
Yeah, Mike?
I have a couple of things for you to add. And this is to Dennis's point about the In-Lu parking fee. I think the most effective way to address it at this point is we really need to review the, our planning department's parking requirements in our zoning ordinances. They're out of sync, a little onerous, and they don't let things happen in the village that wouldn't necessarily impact the parking. So without having to sell someone a $20,000 parking space, I think we can do things like measure square footage differently with regard to the number of seats in a restaurant, the number of parking spaces. There are things we can do. And by the same token, that we should review our green building program. It's, even though we were in the forefront, it's sorely out of date at this point. I think even Fresno has a better one than us. Imagine that. Anyway, I'm not sure if this is the right time in the discussion, but based on a meeting that we had today in City Hall and the thought process of being on the, the subcommittee for community grants for the last three years, I really think it's time we make the grant program a two-year cycle instead of a one-year cycle. I think it would not only help us, save us a lot of time and effort, but it would certainly help our grantees. If Advocacy Inc. knew that they were having X amount of dollars two years in a row, it would, it would have less paperwork to do, less applications, fewer applications. It would just make it a more fluid system, and I'll open that up to the council and see if it's something that they think is a good idea. Good?
Yeah, thanks.
I'll, a few items here. I'll start with the, with the facilities idea. Whether we do the facilities or not, right now, the wharf is a separate entity, I believe, its own product. And I, I agree with Dennis, and we, we need to start setting something into the wharf. If there are, you know, we, we've been making efforts to transfer money to reserves for a couple of items that are coming up. The ones that come to mind are, you know, we've been wanting to put money into the Rispin to do something, and when we finally do get some indication that it's actually ours, you know, I, I would be ready to start doing something like that. I think we all want to get that open to the public as soon as it is safely possible. So I circled that one. You know, you'd like to focus that as a principle, something we'd like to look at. I do support the wharf idea. The, the long term of the facilities, I, I think that could be a great plan also, whether we expand it in with the equipment or keep it separate. That's something to give us guidance on. This grant cycle, the two-year program, I don't have a problem with that. It probably makes sense. I, I think, you know, I don't, I don't want to forecast that too far in advance, but I think to do it two years probably makes it easier on us and easier on the recipients, so that might be a good plan. The In-Lu parking program, it's my recollection that we, we deliberated on that quite a bit. I don't think, I think what we did when we established that program was all we were willing to do at the time. So I don't know that we need to, to go over that again. I, I do kind of support what Mike brought up about, you know, we're all, you know, anxiously awaiting the opening of that, the 242 parking places. And if there's a way, you know, that when we do the, the LCP and we can control allowing more seats in restaurants or something else, you know, by the fact that we're going to exceed what the, what our deficiencies were by having those parking places, maybe that's something we can bring up and talk about. And I think that's what, where you're heading, Dennis, is you want to take the, the chokehold off the people that are there that want to expand. I still stand by what the agreement that we made with, with the In-Lu program. I think we talked about that, and we're kind of, at least for another year, I'm ready to just live with that, but it doesn't mean that our hands are tied with anything else. Couple of questions. The Clare's Commune Project, is that going to be delayed because of the sewer extension until '15, or are we going to see that in '14?
It's going to, excuse me. It's going to be delayed.
It'll be a '15 project.
Yes, so...
Okay. That, it was on here, and I thought that you had kind of told us that that's not going to happen, so that's, that's fine. And that's, that's all for Public Works. The other one is this established CSO position to focus on the village issues. Is that an additional CSO or use one of the existing CSOs to do that?
That was, that was something we did this year. You'll recall that some, a parking enforcement officer was moved into the CSO position, which gave us three CSOs, and we sort of broke the city into divisions, and we had some CSO focused on the village. So that would be a good example of one the council member, Termini, brought up that was done. We did that this last year, so it probably wouldn't make sense to carry forward to next year.
Okay. So we're going to, there will, we will see an abundance of a CSO in the village on a regular basis. That's the program that's already initiated. That's, that's the plan. There's a big presence.
That's correct, and we use that person on the weekends, and we, we did that this summer as well. We had a specific community service officer assigned to the village, and we had two others who split the city in half, which gave us the added coverage, especially if one was off or sick, then we had that extra coverage.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Chief. Let's see. That's all I got.
All right, thank you, Ed. I have a couple of things on supporting economic development. You know, we're having a presentation next week on economic development trends here in Capitola, and there may be some really good ideas that come out of that. There may be some direction that comes from that, that we want, will want to incorporate in here at that time. So I think we should probably just bookmark that and maybe try to plug in some, some thoughts after that presentation. You know, the other one, I mean, if, we, we've talked about a lot of things, and, and under, I, I, oh, there it is. It's still there. Get Rispin Open. I think you were maybe reading my mind. I guess, you know, this year is the end of eight years on the council for me. That whole time, we've struggled and, and on the Rispin property, and it would be wonderful if, and, and I'm not that optimistic it'll actually be open this year, but if we could actually have a plan and a great progress and maybe funding to be able to do that. I would really like to see that maybe as one of the projects that the council prioritizes. And Jamie, I was going to ask you, you said the grant that we have in now is about, is $300,000. One, when, if we were awarded that, when would we receive it? And two, is that enough to actually open the grounds to the public?
Councilmember, so you'll recall, that was a grant application we submitted, I want to say about three months ago, and it was the, it was actually formula-based funding, based on the number of affordable housing units that the city had both developed and preserved over some recent timeframe. And the city had quite a number of affordable housing units, both through the Castle Mobile Home acquisition with, by the nonprofit, as well as Bay Avenue Senior Project and several others. So based on the formula, we were eligible for, I don't remember the number exactly off my head, but it was a number north of 300,000. You'll recall, and I'll look at Steve for this, that we have some, developed some estimates to get the Rispin property open, and that included the ADA access to the park and, and sort of basically providing a safe place for people to go. There are some challenges that we would need to overcome, one of which is developing a SEQA document unfortunately for our plan to analyze it as it is enlisted historic site, and specific changes would require a SEQA document. But Steve, I know you, we had some cost estimates to get all the way through the project that we had originally envisioned, and you recall what those were?
Yeah, I, I think the, the, the grant, I think it's a $375,000 grant, would get the grounds open. I don't think it included funding to do everything we want to do out there, which is rebuild the fountain, re, reestablish the gardens and things like that. I think the total project from where we started three years ago, when we decided to mothball, was a $1.2 million project. We put about half of that in, in redevelopment money before the RDA went away, so we're still approximately that much short. So be a big step in that direction, but it's not everything. But it would get the property open to the public.
Okay. Which is, I mean, that would be a major step forward. Does, would that include doing something with the wall?
Yes, the wall was identified in the first, the next phase of what could be done on. But that's the, probably the biggest part that's dependent on the SEQA review that would have to be done.
Okay. All right, thank you. They, you know, and the other, I think, public project, and I don't, I don't recall, I mean, seeing it listed here, but I think keeping on everybody's focus, the, the plan that Pat Cove, the Lower Pat Cove, was going to be a temporary parking lot, and that there was going to be an ongoing major effort to construct the, the parking garage so that we could, you know, realize the, the benefits of, of, you know, the Lower Pat Cove property, the asset of the community for something other than a parking lot. And so I, I think it's important, and I know that's a really long range, there's a lot of hurdles and complications, but keeping this in, in front of our focus is one of our listed priorities, and so that maybe it perpetuates for future council members, because it's going to take that kind of, I think, attention and effort to make that I mean, I, I also, I mean, I support the, the two-year grant program for community programs. And, and I'm certainly, I mean, maybe relooking at the In-Lu parking program. I know we had exhausted discussion about it, but now, once the Lower Pat Cove is open and we have some experience with that, maybe it's worthwhile to have that come by, come back to us and for a review. And...
Could we also add our, our effort to conserve water in all public...
Thank you, yes.
Public properties?
Yeah.
You know, if we're going to get two and three times our water bill as a, a fine for using too much water, if we put that much money into drought tolerant planting and deplanting some areas, we could save it and still have the city look beautiful.
And another, I was trying to see if it was listed here, but, you know, we had, had talked about, or have talked about having Wi-Fi or internet access, you know, available, particularly in the village. And, and I, I think that that would be a worthwhile project, a project that would really serve the public, attract more people to come to Capitola. You know, if people could view that they could be on the beach and be distracted through the internet while there, then...
We're all about distraction. I like that, it's good.
I mean, it is a mobile world, and so, and I think that those are my ideas and concepts. Although, I mean, I think these are excellent budget principles. The other, I mean, I, I think it's important that maybe this come to, our, comes to the council maybe more frequently so that we're, because this is probably what, just, I mean, the first time we've seen it since, you know, we developed these almost a year ago. Maybe more frequent review about these and, and, you know, maybe an assessment, maybe mid-year about how, you know, how we're doing. So I know this is a mid-year, but...
We, we do include the, the, a big spot for these in the draft budget, but you know, what we could do is, is maybe in our introduction, where we talk about the budget, go back and look at the principles and then talk about how the, the budget was developed with the principles in mind. I think is that's, you know, that's, that's obviously a real nexus, and we could make that nexus a little bit more strongly.
And, and one final thought, I was, if, are, these principles are posted on our website, and I think they would be good, and so that, and we could also encourage, I mean, if members of the public want to convey, you know, what is their interest? How would they, what recommendations would they have? What did they see? And so that, you know, we can be, you know, have that communication with members of the public on these ideas.
You know, one time, and I don't know how many years back it was, we actually had a yearly forum on this same subject. We invited the public to bring their ideas for, for the community into this forum. Maybe, maybe next year, when we do the same thing, that we make it as an open invitation for the public to bring forward their ideas. I'm not sure. One, one thing to add, maybe this is to the Arts Commission I'm talking, is we really need welcome to Capitola signs when you enter town. We have two older ones that are kind of hidden in the bushes at a low key on two ends. It may be a, a good project for the Arts Commission, Mike.
Yes.
Welcome to Capitola, the home of kind and gentle people, something that makes people feel warm and...
Something in the middle of the roundabout?
In the middle of the roundabout would even work.
We're also considering taking on a project of expanding the mural. Now that we, the RTC owns the Rail Corridor, we can probably paint the overpass, which is a great place to say welcome to Capitola, and also continue the mural past the steps on the, on the bulkhead, the abutment of the, the train bridge.
Are we talking about the, the trestle here?
The concrete, no, the concrete...
Yeah, I love it.
Right.
Yeah, this...
And we're also looking at one of our future projects being the restoration of the Rispin Fountain as an art project.
Great one, wonderful. Would you consider taking a replacement for the, for the four ladies standing up there at the edge of the police department? The one, the one with the bathing suits on?
That'll probably change soon. With a new parking lot, there's, we have to get different ladies there.
So, did a member of the public that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for the council for any further discussion and adoption of these budget principles?
I'll move, I'll move that we adopt a budget principles with all suggestions from all four present council members.
Can I have a point of clarification? I, I, my suggestion would be that we've obviously identified some ideas which staff can incorporate into the budget principles. There are some that should, my recommendation would be should drop off, establishing the village CSO position, you know, it was done.
Yeah.
With those things that were one time, that were completed.
Take, take the ones, the motion would be to remove completed items from that list.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Does the motion is second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Which brings us to the next item is additional materials. I don't believe that we're any additional materials distributed this evening, which finally brings us to adjournment of this meeting until our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be on Thursday.
Excuse me, Mayor, I'd just like to... Anybody listening out there, remind people to avoid 41st and Capitola Road.
Anybody listening out there, remind people to avoid 41st and Capitola Road. That signal has now been turned off for about the, most of the evening as they replaced the cabinet there, so people can avoid that intersection. It'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would like to, as you mentioned earlier, make sure everyone is aware and invited next week. We will have a pretty interesting discussion about economic development challenges for Capitola. That's coming up next Wednesday night here at council chambers at 7:00, and it's a great partnership with the Chamber of Commerce and the city to bring in, who we hope is going to be a real good speaker to talk about some of the challenges in retailing and the sort of internet age, if you will.
Did we send out an invitation to the businesses on 41st? Did they get any kind of special invitation?
The chamber took the lead on, on the noticing for that and talking, you know, reaching out to the membership and getting, getting the word out for the event. That was part of the partnership, was they were going to market it, and we were going to, we were going to provide the venue and get the speaker here.
So Christine and I, we're over at the business fair tonight, this, earlier this evening, and...